Okay, Mayor, we're all set, ready when you are.
Okay, let's get started. This is the June 2nd, 2020 Tuesday meeting of the WPCA Town Council Meeting of North Branford, Connecticut. We have a notice to notice, I'm going to read it again, in accordance with Governor Lamont's Executive Order 7B regarding the COVID-19 pandemic, this meeting will be held remotely with no in-person attendance. It can be viewed on TotucketTV/ Facebook Live at 7:00 PM. All right, let's start with a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag. To the United States of America. To the Republic of the United States. One nation, one nation. Under the individual, individual. With the interest of law. Law. Here we go, how's that? Okay, Michelle, roll call, please.
Mayor Vigliano.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Zampiano.
Here.
Councillor Angeloni.
Here.
Councillor Diamond.
Here.
Councillor Duty.
Here.
Councillor Fornin.
Here.
Councillor Gold.
Here.
Councillor Paternoster.
Here.
Councillor Pollicia.
Here.
Okay, I need a motion for the minutes of previous meetings, I guess I have to do them separate, May 19th, 2020, WPCA town council minutes?
So moved. Second.
Okay, who's that?
I think I started and Rose seconded.
Okay. Can't write this down, hang on a minute. All right, Michelle, that was, a motion was made by Councillor Diamond and seconded by Councillor Angeloni, any questions, comment?
Ballot favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstained?
Okay, the next is May 26th, 2020, special meeting, WPCA and Town Council Minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Councillor Angeloni, I believe, made the motion, and Councillor Diamond seconded it, you get it right?
Yeah.
Okay. No, any discussion? Marie? Michelle?
Marie, go for it.
This ain't easy, this ain't easy.
Aye.
I know.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Aye.
Yeah, aye.
All ayes. Okay, next we have Water Pollution Control Authority Agenda, under New Business, A is number 10, Maplewood Lane, request to connect the sanitary sewers by easement, map 63, lot 44.
All right, good evening, this is Kurt, just to give you a little overview of the request before you, Shawn Anderson of Town Maplewood Lane is requesting to connect the sanitary sewer system, however, there's no sanitary sewer fronting his property on Maplewood Lane, he would like to do it via an easement to his, the funding property owner's property to Great Oak Road, where there are sanitary sewers. We have done similar things in the past, where he approved it, property fronting on Run Road to connect to another road via an easement. It's relatively uncommon, but it's, it's certainly been done when you don't have sanitary sewers fronting on your property. It's pretty straightforward in terms of, you know, the layout, he'd have to run the sanitary sewer lateral from his property over to Great Oak Road via easement, and there's a sketch in the package showing that proposed layout. He would have to pay a special, the underlying special connection fee of $12,300 for the right to connect to the sanitary sewers, and he'd be responsible for the cost of the whole sanitary sewer lateral installation. The other thing, the unusual thing, we have done in the past, similar thing, we require them to enter into basically a permanent agreement that basically puts a caveat on the approval that if sewers are ever extended up Maplewood Lane, fronting on his property and benefiting the rest of Maplewood Lane, he would get a credit for his assessment of the $12,300 special connection fee, and he would be assessed the difference. For instance, if the cost per property owner on Maplewood Lane, if and when sanitary sewers were ever extended, let's say $20,000 per lot, he would get a credit of $12,300 that he paid for the special connection fee, but he'd be required to pay the difference in the assessment of $7,000. Again, we have done this in the past, and there's a permanent agreement which we've targeted towards his property, but it's the same type of permanent agreement we've done in other situations throughout town. The other, one other caveat on this is the timeline, we're in the process of redoing the paving of Forestview Road and Great Oak Road, they're scheduled, we'll probably pave Great Oak Road sometime in July this year, it's part of our road program. That's what sort of brings it up, at this point in time, the property owner would like to get it done before all this work is done, so he doesn't have to cut into any new pavement, which Fran and I have the same opinion, if we could get them to do this ASAP, run the lateral off the road, and then whenever they do the connection to the property, that can follow, but we'd like to get any roadwork done as soon as possible. There is a proposed motion, with pretty much standard conditions, in addition to that he enter into the permanent agreement, providing for any future payments if sewers run down Maplewood Lane. That's attached in the packet, and again, like I said, there's a sketch showing the proposed layout. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to try to address them.
Kurt, how deep is that line on Great Oak Road?
It's about eight or nine feet.
Okay, so it's not bad.
Even up, but it's not.
Way deep.
Yes.
Kurt, I don't understand why you have this caveat about connection on Maplewood Lane, is there a problem with connecting on Great Oak Road and we really don't want it to come up on Maplewood Lane? Why do you have that in there?
No problem with connecting to Great Oak Road, but the sewers don't extend up to Maplewood Lane. They're going to see this in front of the property. So the only sewers that they can connect with at this point is on Great Oak Road.
No, you don't understand my question, why do you have this caveat about him connecting on Maplewood Road? Once he's connected on Great Oak, why would he go back and reconnect somewhere else, dig up his lawn, incur the expense, and pay an additional connection fee?
No, he wouldn't, he wouldn't have to pay it, but what it does is, it protects the other people on Maplewood Lane, so that instead of, say, six people paying for the cost of sewers in the future going up Maplewood Lane, and he's going the other way, he would be counted in that, so he would pay his proportionate share, so it's a fair, the fair burden to everybody on Maplewood Lane, less the cost of what he's paying to connect Great Oak Road.
Okay, so if I understand you, you're not saying he would have to connect on Maplewood Lane, he would just have to pay any additional cost to connect?
That's correct, right.
Got it, thank you.
Okay.
No, I don't think, I don't, I didn't hear you say pay an additional cost, Kurt, I thought you said he would, he would be, get a credit.
He gets a credit from any future cost of sewer assessment going up, if it ever run up Maplewood Lane, it may never happen, but it just, it tries to be fair to everybody on Maplewood Lane that doesn't have an alternative, and that they're paying down the road.
Okay, thanks.
Okay.
Kurt, is there an easement there, it's by Vigliano, is there an easement there already?
No, there's not an easement there already, he has to file like that legal document where he can connect, do the actual connection to the sanitary sewer.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, like I said, the thing that's sort of, from Fran and my perspective, timing is important on this, we'd like to get him at least to do the work in Great Oak Road as soon as possible, and then he can worry about the final connection over time, get those legal documents, just to get him off the road so we can pave the road and not have to have it dug up.
All right, can we put a stipulation in the motion that is conditional upon him doing the connection spur immediately, whether or not he does the actual connection until sometime later?
Absolutely. You can just add that to it. And he's, he's very aware of it, because he knows the cost, the cost of connection, he'd have to do a lot more work if he waits, because he'd have to make a huge costly.
We don't want to cut on a new street, he can do as he chooses.
He doesn't want to do it, and we don't want him to do it.
Okay.
So can we, can we just put in there that it needs, that part needs to be done before the paving?
The paving of Great Oak Road. Yeah, and I.
Scheduled for July of 2020, I mean, you can, you know, just so that we have a date reference in there.
Yeah, well, he's, he's got to cut in the spur into the sewer line by June 30th.
No, prior to, we've already discussed it with him, and he's trying to line this up to do it, but prior to the road being paved by the town, we're anticipating it being done sometime beginning of July, but our paving schedule may, may change, but you can put, yeah, okay, put it by July 1st or June 30th, that would be fine.
Okay. So that's going in the, that's going like item seven in the motion, that would be an additional?
Yep, just added to the suggested motion, item number seven, that the, any work within Great Oak Road shall be completed prior to June 30th, 2020.
You have that. You have that. Doesn't neighbor have to sign a document too, before he can do that?
Well, that, he can do, that's within the town right away, he has to be in agreement with his neighbor, he's doing that at his risk, it's all within the town right away. He's not doing it within the easement area, he's doing it within the public right away. He would get a permit from us, a road opening permit to do that.
Michelle, did you get item seven that gets added to this motion? I'm just unclear whether it's the payment for the sewer connection that he needs to have prior to that, or how exactly, what is he responsible for as far as connecting prior to June 30th?
Any work within the Great Oak Road right away shall be completed prior to June 30th, 2020.
Okay, thank you. So I would like to move the suggested motion with the addition of item seven, as stated by the town engineer, that any work to be done in the Great Oak Road area needs to be completed prior, on or before June 30th, 2020.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Councillor Angeloni, seconded by Councillor Fornin, any further discussion? No, okay, Michelle, can we have a vote when you get ready?
Mayor Vigliano?
Oh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor?
That's all right.
Aye.
Thank you. Aye.
Anyone opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Thanks.
Okay, next is 224 Foxon Road, request to connect mobile home recreational vehicle park sites to sanitary sewers on Totucket Road.
Okay, good evening again, this item's been before you several times already, discussing the potential of the future connection of mobile home units and recreational vehicle units to the sanitary sewer system in Totucket Road. And it's really a two-part process going before you. Currently what's before you is, is the request to look at the regulations, sanitary sewer assessment regulations, and try to come up with a connection fee for recreational vehicle sites, we're connecting to the sanitary sewers, mobile homes, home sites, we're already, they're age restricted by HUD, according to the property owner, and we've talked about making sure that there were provisions to make sure that they remain affordable, age restricted units while they're connected to the sanitary sewer. But again, the focus of, the first step before you is to look at the regulation change and come up, or possibly to look at the potential of designating a special connection fee for the recreational vehicle units, and that's added to page eight of the attached regulations, it penciled in residential zones notwithstanding, 1A above designated transient recreational vehicle park spaces with connections for sanitary sewer hookups shall be covered at the rate of 130 unit per authorized connection. And then there's just some, just minor revisions to the lettering of the other sections. But at the last meeting, there were several questions that came up, and there were some requests to make sure that town attorney had reviewed this, this item, had input into it, there was four questions that I got out of the, out of the meeting, maybe just to go through them briefly, the first question being, who would be char, who would be charged and pay the special connection fee, the property owner or the trailer owner, trailer owners, I discussed that with the trailer park owner, and he said that he would be paying it, because he's, he's the land, he's the landowner, the other units could potentially come and go, but he owns this site that they're located on. Question number two, how would we enforce age restriction units for the long-term mobile home recreational park? What should something be filed on the land records to ensure it is? According to the property owner, the long-term mobile home units are how to prove age restricted, I discussed this with the town attorney, and his recommendation would be to require, if and when they were ever approved, to connect to the sanitary sewers, and require execution of a sewer service agreement, and a restrictive covenant between the town and property owner to be filed on land records at the time they approval to connect, stipulating that condition. On number three, will the proposed regulation change have repercussions on any other sites or uses in town? Will there be a revision to the regulation that affects the property setting precedents as a special consideration? Per discussion through the town attorney, the regulation change would be applied townwide, any possible future change to the regulation will go through the public process and be applied equally throughout the town. And number four, just how many recreational vehicle sites, how many long-term mobile home sites are located in the property, and currently there are 15 recreational vehicle sites and 47 long-term mobile home unit sites.
Kurt, is he looking to add all 15 recreational sites?
At this point, at this point, he's asking to connect three, well, he's not even, his first request will be if we consider the change in the sewer assessment regulations setting the rate that they have to pay.
Right.
To basically one-third of the $12,300, or $4,100 per unit, then, then his intent is to come in to connect, what he's told me, three recreational vehicle units at this point in time, and down the road, he, his intent is to phase them in over time, as he can afford to do it.
Okay. So it went, the special connection fee would not be on all 15, it would, he would do it incrementally, and that would be okay?
Incrementally in phases, that's, that's, he's represented to me. Again, the first thing, first item of business really is, if the Water Pollution Control Authority would like to consider this regulation change to set the rate for the special connection fee for transient recreational vehicle units, we would have to set a public hearing for the regulation change to do that, and go through that process to change the regulations. Then he will come in, if that were, with a proposal with a site plan showing what he wants to connect, and he would have to provide us details of what he would want to do, and that would be a separate action at that point to consider the actual connection. So again, who says?
Kurt, one question.
Sure.
He has a dump station there now?
No dump station.
There's no dump station at all in the entire park?
No, they all, they all have their individual onsite.
Okay.
And there wouldn't, and there wouldn't be. And that, I would believe, would be part of any site plan review and approval, a condition of that, and a field inspection to verify. But again, that's, that's the second step, but it's a good question to ask now.
So Kurt, in the past, when we, when, let's say an apartment house is going on, you know, the sewers, do we let them do it in phases, or do we just assign, you have 10 units, so you pay for all 10 units? Or do we let them go in phases?
Usually if the apartment unit's coming in, you know, they're planning on building the apartment unit, and then they all connect in. If we went by a unit, if we were running sanitary sewers to a unit, they would want to hook them all up at once. Again, normally, they're hooked up at once. What he's trying to do is make it affordable for him to do it, and do it over time.
Okay, so I guess my question is, have we done that in the past, that, I mean, because you're, we're talking about 15, it's basically like 15 apartments, because they're all separate?
They're all separate little units, that's, that's correct.
Right.
They have to have, they have to have, where I would think we would control is, is the site plan page.
Okay.
To show the connection and limit it to that, and then in the agreement, any violation, you know, because there's always the potential, somebody doesn't live by the rules, I don't think for this property owner, but down the road, something could change, so you want to stipulate that if they violate the regulations, there's a consequence.
Well, I just want to make it fair, because if we're, if we're going to make a change, the first step is to make a change in the regulations, which is townwide, we just, you know, it has to be fair to everyone, if this comes up to someone else down the road, and not that we're giving special consideration.
Yeah, and I try to have rationale for it, and I put it in the previous memorandums, the basis for it, again, some of it look at a little differently, but, but I put it out there in terms of the way I was looking at it, trying to be fair.
As long as at some point in time, we have control over how we monitor what sites get hooked up, and, and that we can carry it through.
Right.
Kurt, it's Ron, it's Ron Pollicia, I just had a quick question, I know the, the more permanent sites are 55 and over, are the transient sites only 55 and over as well?
No, he, he's not, there wouldn't be age restriction on them. Only the mobile home units.
So is he getting any benefit currently for, for being 55 and over in this, in this plan?
In this plan, he, well, he would get it if he went to, you know, if he, if and when he goes to connect the mobile home units. And as long as he provides the required verification, and it's required by the town attorney, and insurance that's there for as long as they're connected to sanitary sewers, then they would get that benefit. The town attorneys did look into that more, and that's where he came up with the sewer service agreement and restrictive covenant, he actually sort of was working on drafting one, to try to put those concerns on paper, but again, that would be at that, I would think, at the next phase of the possible connection.
I just wanted to make sure he wasn't getting any sort of a discount for 55 and over when the transient sites weren't even going to be 55 and over?
No.
Okay, so Kurt, what's the earliest that we can do a public hearing?
We can do it at the first meeting in, in July, maybe, there's only one meeting, I think, in July, the next WPCA meeting, which is basically a month away.
Okay.
Because the only, the only real change is that on page eight.
Right. Right, it, well, it gets, we have to add some language and then change the order.
The order, that's correct. And then again, that's for public hearing, and just for the public hearing, and we, if comments or concerns come up, we can always modify it, but at least based upon the comments from the public hearing, but that's all I have proposed at this point that I put before you.
Kurt?
Yes.
Kurt, Walt Gold, is there a way to meter the flow of that?
Well, we charge, and I think they're going to get charged on the high end, we charge, you know, a residential unit is a residential unit, a five-family house, I mean, a five-bedroom house pays the same as a one-bedroom apartment, you don't distinguish that route, and trying to monitor sanitary sewers, it's not like metering a water line, it's a lot more difficult to do with it, because of the solids in it, and I don't think that would work for us.
No, you'd have a lot of problems.
Yeah, just because of things.
All right, thank you.
Okay. The requested, or I would think the appropriate action would be to schedule a public hearing to consider the regulation change. For, ask to scut for the.
Mike, is our meeting, I don't have the schedule in front of me, is it July 7th, do we have two or just one meeting in July?
I think it's just, I don't have it in front of me either, I thought it was just.
I think it's two.
I think it's two, I thought we decided two in July and one in August.
That's what I thought. July 7th and July 21st. Okay, thanks, Michelle.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to set a public hearing date for WPCA on July 7th at 7:30 PM to, for the regulation change.
I'll second that.
Okay, motion was made by Councillor Angeloni and seconded by Councillor Diamond, any further discussion? Can we have a vote? Michelle? Mr., oh, go ahead, go ahead, Walt, go ahead. I'm sorry, go do the vote, I'm sorry.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Would anyone like to abstain? Okay.
Okay, all right, before I go any further, before I get into the town council agenda, there's something I would like to say, and I'm going to read you the first, the first sentence, we had a, we had a memorial service on Sunday at the Town Hall, and I'll read you the first, first sentence, "The town of North Branford, in cooperation with local churches, honored residents who have..." have died or have fallen ill from COVID-19 in a memorial ceremony held on the lawn in front of the town hall." And I just, uh, let me, let me, uh, let me read who was there. We have, uh, Reverend Vance Taylor from the North Bramford Congregational Church was present. Uh, the Reverend Lucy LaRaca, LaRaca Zion Episcopal Church and the Reverend Robin, Robin of London, uh, Northford Congregational Church. Also, uh, town manager Mike Paulus and finance director Anthony Esposito did the video, did a great job, and fire chief William Stewart was there. And I just wanted to say, uh, Mike, Mike will talk a little bit about this more about cases that we've had in North Bramford, but I just want to say what a, what a great showing it was and it was, I was proud to be there and I want to thank everybody that showed up and everybody that did what they did. Okay, uh, well, let's get into the town council agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's Walter Goode. Um, after we talk about the police station, uh, RFQ, would I be allowed to speak a little bit about the police station or do we need to change the agenda?
Uh, good question. You asked the town attorney?
Yes.
Ben, are you there? Ben? Can you see, the mic, he's not on?
Yeah, he's just got on mute, there you go.
I'm on three screens and I don't know which way the mouse goes.
Walter has a question for you.
Sure.
Ben, I'd like to speak a little bit after the, um, RFQ about the police station, about the police station. Can I do that right after or do, do we need to change the agenda?
Uh, let me.
This is the new business, Ben.
Yeah, no, I'm looking at the way it's worded, uh. Are, uh, from a topic standpoint, uh, it's related to the topic, but is it related to the RFQ or is it more of a general statement?
More of a general statement about the police station.
Uh, just for purposes of keeping the items kind of from a minute standpoint separated.
Yep.
Add, I guess there's two ways of doing it. If you're looking for discussion, if you're not looking for discussion and you're just looking to make a statement, you can do that during public participation and just do it that way. Or if you're looking for there to be conversation between the council members, you can, uh, add to the agenda. I think that would be cleaner than simply kind of having a off-subject conversation that's broader than what's on your agenda.
Yeah, can we add it to the agenda then?
You can make the motion.
Like to make a motion to talk further about the police station, um.
So you, so you want to amend the agenda, Walt?
Amend, amend the agenda and add it to the agenda.
So it would be seven?
Seven G.
And the, and the topic would be discussion of North Bramford Police Station.
Police Station, yes.
Okay, so Michelle, you got that? Walter's making a motion to amend the agenda to add seven G, North Bramford Police Station.
Yep, I'll sa- I just did a second.
Second. Bye, Tom.
Thank you.
Okay.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Anyone like to? Not coming.
Okay, so since we want to keep the agenda clean and do it a clean way, I'm going to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item seven, eight. Um, and it's to add discussion of, um, I guess it would be improvements to the Swiatek property where the Poco Fest is held.
For improvement?
It's the, isn't that the Swiatek property?
Okay.
No.
No, what is that?
Augur property.
That's augur property?
Yes.
Okay, so the augur property where the Poco Fest is held.
Really? Okay.
Okay, so the motion, a motion was made by Councilor Angeloni.
Was it seconded?
Tom just seconded it.
Seconded it.
Okay.
All right, Councilor, Deputy Mayor Zampiano seconded it. Any other discussion?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay.
And now I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to add item seven, I, is to set a date for a finance subcommittee meeting.
Second by Tom.
All right. Motion made by Councilor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy, Deputy Mayor, uh, Zampiano. Any, any discussion? We have a vote, Michelle?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay. All right, uh, okay, next we have, we're into the town council agenda, we have the town manager's report, COVID, COVID-19 update.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mayor, um, very brief on that. I will just comment that, uh, Sunday's event was, I, I think, um, you know, well done and I appreciate that Reverend Vance Taylor approached to put that together. It's just unfortunate that the public can't be there to gather, uh, but we were able to, uh, film it as best we could, it was a very windy day, but there are, uh, flags out there and we, uh, also encourage, uh, those that, uh, in the public residence that have, uh, want to recognize someone, um, you know, in terms of first responder or somebody that, uh, may have fallen ill to it, um, certainly can contact us and we can continue to add the circle, uh, that we've done out there for, for the memorial. So, um, uh, thank those that participated and, uh, unfortunately, uh, since that, that event, you know, we're, we're, our cases, uh, I have to clarify that I believe at the last meeting, uh, stated that our case, our, our number of positive cases since the beginning of this pandemic reached eighty-eight and that is incorrect. There was a, uh, data, um, uh, problem within the, uh, date, uh, state's, uh, databank. So it was actually reset to eighty and, uh, unfortunately, the last couple of days, uh, we're now currently as of today, uh, eighty-three positive cases with six fatalities. Uh, so, uh, unfortunately, um, you know, we're still seeing fatalities and, and, uh, the number is, uh, slowing, but still it, it, it's rising and, and we'll continue to do the best we can, but that's the current, uh, tally at this point. I continue to work on the, uh, partial reopening plan that's coming together, uh, targeting next Monday, June eighth, uh, for that partial reopening. We have, um, one or two, uh, items that we're still waiting, uh, to be shipped, uh, to get in place. Should have those, uh, next week in terms of a Dropbox, um, that we're, uh, going to put on the front. But work, working through the protocols and procedures, uh, that we need to, and I'll be briefing with the department heads tomorrow on what that process is going to look like. By appointment only, um, obviously we're segregating or dividing the, uh, the town hall up and partitioning, uh, to do this safely, uh, as, as best we can to, uh, eliminate, um, uh, any type of, uh, exposure or access is going to be very limited when, uh, individuals from the public come in. So we're working through schedules, working through protocols and, uh, just trying to do the best we can. So I think we'll be moving in that direction and then the next, um, anticipated phase of June twentieth, where the libraries and, uh, uh, gyms and, and our rec department senior center could potentially come online, but again, we still have to monitor those, that data, uh, and see, uh, where we are as we get closer to June twentieth. So that's, um, it for now, I guess, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions with respect to COVID-19.
Hey, hey, Mike?
Yes.
How, how's Evergreen Woods doing with this pandemic?
Uh, I would, I would have to say exceptionally well, uh, as far as I know, and I, I have not heard, uh, from Mike, um, uh, since last week, uh, Mike, and that being Mike Pascasilla from East Shore Health District, uh, but, um, yeah, from, from all I've heard, uh, and again, uh, they, they've done a remarkable job thus far.
Okay, thank you.
And we're, we're, Mike is in, certainly in close contact, uh, with them, I, I'm sure, uh, weekly basis, if not, uh, daily as well.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Michael. Next we have, uh, Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, surplus property program, North Bramford Purchasing Card, which is a, a P card in parenthesis.
Yeah, so this is a, an item that was on your agenda for the March seventeenth meeting that was canceled, uh, so just bringing that back to, uh, bring some closure to that with respect to the, uh, any questions on how that program may run, well, two separate programs, obviously, the first, the Connecticut Department Administrative Services surplus property program, and then of course, there may be questions with respect to our, uh, purchasing P card, which are two separate, um, programs, but, uh, at, at the time when it came up, I think January, February, we were reviewing that, uh, looking, uh, to track all of those purchases. So I've provided the, the memo, again, that was the same memo from March seventeenth and then, um, the P card information a- as well, uh, with respect to, uh, tracking and showing that, you know, we've had, uh, great success within the program and, uh, and tracked everything, uh, that, that's gone through there since two thousand and five, so a hundred and fifty purchases, uh, not of all have, uh, have worked out for us and obviously, uh, those that didn't, uh, or we used and then got rid of, uh, we sold and, uh, recouped some costs, uh, with respect to that, but all of the accounting gone through, uh, and, and went through with, uh, finance and also reviewed with, uh, Vin Marino, just to bounce it off someone as well, uh, outside to look at this in terms of our process and realize that it's not a perfect situation and there's some questions about, um, you know, the process and I, you can see at the end of my memo, I'd recommended that, uh, you know, I bring that function in-house with purchasing and purchasing is essentially is, is, is made by the, by the powers given by the, the charter. Michelle Knockwood is the assistant, uh, purchasing agent, uh, and I think, uh, between, you know, well, actually I'll take the lead on that and I'm just rethinking that, I don't want to land or lay that at Michelle's feet, it should be squarely with me, so I'll take on that function of review and, um, and in fact, I've, uh, not only reviewing but purchasing, uh, I've been in contact with, uh, Veronica Cody at the state level and she's given me, uh, access to, uh, register, uh, to be that person for, for the town, uh, so that there isn't any question as to how that process is going to run, that there'll be, uh, oversight on that and, uh, department heads will have to request and send those, uh, to me, uh, for those purchases. And again, I think it's a, it's a great tool, we've had great success and I would like to continue using this, uh, probably because I, I think it's beneficial for the town, especially when you think about items that, that may come up that, um, a department head may not have, uh, budgeted or put in the budget or gotten through the budget, uh, but it could be, you know, an extra filing cabinet, it could be a desk or something like that, that, uh, they could pick up for fifty dollars, uh, and save a couple of hundred. So, um, you know, I, I hope there was enough, um, time to digest, uh, that information and to go through that and I certainly can speak to the, uh, purchasing, uh, card as well, it's basically essentially a credit card that we have and we have tight controls on, on who uses that and, uh, there's also a rebate component and today we were notified that, uh, the town will receive, uh, twelve hundred and sixty-three dollars and ninety-four cents, uh, as of our participation in, from, from last year. So, uh, that's just another avenue for us, uh, in terms of convenient, not everyone will take a purchase order, so there are times when we can, you know, use the P card and it's convenient. Uh, so again, um, that program's been working well for us and, uh, I'd like to use that and continue on with that.
So Mike, how about if, um, we just put this on the agenda for the finance committee just to kind of review and look at the policy and the procedures, whatever amendments or suggestions you have, um, so that we can just put it all together and, and then, you know, it can come back to the council, we can make a recommendation back to the council when we have everything put together.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
Mike, I have one question. I appreciate all the information you provided, but in your spreadsheet, in some cases you don't identify a department, it's blank. Why, why are some of them without a, a department mentioned?
Well, I, I, I'm not sure we had time to, to, um, track down, uh, by and large, most of them are public works, I can go through that again.
I'm curious as to why some of them were that way, that was the only thing.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure we, you know, going back to two thousand and fifteen, I'm not sure, um, but I can.
You just couldn't identify who had, who, who had purchased them?
Yeah, I'll try to, I'll do the guess, best we can to try and go back in there to identify and, and fill in, fill in those, uh, those gaps.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, let's, we'll move on. Next we have, uh, number five, citizen statements and petitions and correspondence. A is North Bramford High School building project emails from, from residents.
Yeah, so I know this was something that came up and, and, and asked for it, I've been sending all those on, but it, um, I, I hope you also, also saw the, um, the, the list that was in the packet, but the, the secondary, um, Gina put together, uh, I, I don't think you could see the actual letters in the Dropbox, so she went and rescanned them and, and put it in, uh, late this afternoon, uh, for members to see that and, and actually read through each and every one of them if you want to. But, uh, she had tried and, and did put together a, uh, spreadsheet just to show, indicate, um, you know, which residents had, um, submitted and whether, and generally, and, and whether or not they were in, you know, in favor or against the, uh, the high school and overwhelmingly most of them, if not just a handful, one or two that, that weren't, uh, for it. And I do have to apologize to, directly to, to Michelle Pollack, uh, who did submit an email and I apologize, her, her, uh, comments were not reflected in a yes or no, uh, way and didn't fall into a yes or no category, but she had some very, um, poignant things to say about the, uh, spirit in which she was responding and hoping that people could voice their opinions respectively in a mindful, uh, way and understanding the situation of others. And, uh, that, that wasn't captured, in fact, was mis, mis, was mischaracterized and I, to you, Michelle, I directly apologize, uh, for that, that oversight.
Thank you, Mike, that's fine, I appreciate it.
But, uh, by and large, it's, uh, you know, just an effort to put this into the record because there were quite a few residents that had called in and asked that these, uh, be forwarded to the council, uh, and I think too, too long and too much time to read each and every one of them into the record. So here's a, a sort of summary of, of that that we can enter into the record.
Okay. Thank you, Michael.
Sure.
Next we'll go into resignations and, and appointments. Uh, A, first one we have is, uh, reappointment of Mary Bigelow, uh, to the South Central, Connecticut Cable Advisory Council, term to expire six thirty two thousand twenty-two.
Still moved.
Second.
Oh, and I gotta write the names down. Motion made, motion made by, uh, Councilor Ford, seconded, seconded by, by Councilor Angeloni, you know, any discussion?
Ball in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Anyone abstain?
Aye.
Okay. Next, next we have reappointment of Gerald Fishback to the Conservation Alien Wetlands and Water Course Agency, term to expire twelve thirty-one two thousand twenty-one.
Still moved.
Second.
That was, uh, Councilor Angeloni, uh, Diamond, made the motion?
Yes.
Okay. Motion made by Councilor Diamond, seconded by, uh, Councilor Angeloni. Any discussion? Motion made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, any discussion? Vote, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Next, we have reappointment of William Goldensy, the Conservation of Inland Wetlands, Water Course Agency, Planning and Zoning alternate, term to expire 5/31/2023. Okay, who's that, Joe?
So moved, sorry.
That's all right.
Second.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Forn and seconded by Counselor Angeloni, any discussion? Vote, please, Michelle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Next, we have reappointment of Melinda Fonda, the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire 12/31/2022.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion was made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor Angeloni, any discussion? Okay, we have a vote, please, Michelle.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, and the last one we have is reappointment of Brenda Schuler to Library Board, term to expire 12/31/2021.
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who is the second, Tommy?
Lo.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Diamond, seconded by Counselor, I didn't ask her, any discussion? Okay, we have a vote, please?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, we'll move into new business discussion in action. The first one is, A is Acceptance of Farmington Drive.
Farmington Drive is the Shands property, the development they put up on the Shands property, above of 17.
On 17 across from Old Post Road. Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
It's the new development. I'd like to make motion that the North Branford Town Council hereby accepts Farmington Drive from Middletown Avenue, Route 17, an approximately 4,000-foot roadway through the looped roadway along with the provided drainage and related improvements conditioned upon receipt of the final signed deeds by the town attorney.
Second, Tom.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano, any discussion?
Just a question, is Kurt still with us?
Yes, I am.
Kurt, there was a serious bridge put in there across the Farm River.
Yep.
And I don't know if that's inspected by you, by the state, by whomever, but I assume that was looked at carefully and everybody satisfied?
That's correct.
Safe?
That's correct, it's been certified by a professional engineer, and we have the ASBILs for it, it's actually provided the ASBIL drawings and the documents to the state, who will do a biennial inspection of it once it's, on a routine basis, once it's a town road. But yes, it has been inspected, certified, and verified.
Thank you.
That was a very big concern.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
Okay, any further discussion?
Can I ask a question, Bob?
Sure you can, yeah.
Just out of curiosity, who assigns a street or road name?
Kurt, I don't know.
The owner can, the owner can propose the name, the planning committee will approve it.
Yeah, I'm just curious how it worked, I just, I have no idea.
Usually, it's the property owner or the person.
Okay.
We look to make sure there's not a confusion between other similar named properties in town, but some of the older developments, we do have confused names.
Okay, yeah, I just wondered how they get named, really, thank you.
Okay. I guess I need a vote on that.
Is it all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Okay, next, we have a discussion on RFQ/P for North Branford Police Facility Architectural and Engineering Service.
Yeah, so this is a subject we covered previous meetings about whether or not, you know, to go out and move, to go out to develop an RFP for architectural services and realizing that Silver Petricelli, in its original response to the, an RFQP back in 2016-17, the council had set it up and designed it in such a way that if the council was happy and wanted to proceed and further authorize the architect to proceed to the final phase, it could, so there is really no reason to go back out, we have the ability, the council has the authority and ability to do that, and I had sent that contract and RFQ over to Vin Marino for his review and his response, and the email is there for you. I really, I don't know that there's any reason why we would switch, that we could stick with them and save money and proceed and negotiate with them in terms of an approval to go forward.
Why would it be a money saver, Mike?
Well, I mean, just in terms of, well, not so much money, but as a time minimal in terms of cost to advertise and put it out there, but more of a time-saving measure, but the review process would certainly take a few months to go through that process. And I think, I think just the continuity of sticking with all of the work and hours that we put in with Silver Petricelli to, you know, the committee has taken them through, you know, moving from spot to spot, location to location, and getting to where we finally are, different renderings and so forth. I just, I think another architectural engineering firm might come in and say, hey, I like to start from square one, from scratch here and go through it. I think we've put a lot of time and effort into it.
So it's not necessarily an obligation, it's more practical?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we award RFQ dash, or number nine, 2019-2020 Construction Management Owner Rep for Ma-
Well, we're not, not there yet.
No. RFQ for North Branford Police Facility, Architectural and Engineering Services.
Well, do we even have to approve that? I'm sorry, it should be seconded first, I apologize. I'll second it.
I'll second it.
Let me, the question, do we even have to approve this if we're gonna go with Silver Petricelli, since we already approved it back in whenever, 17 or 16?
We're moving to the second step, so I would say we should, for legal sake.
Yeah, I think maybe if I could, just to, just to take a step back to, and put this on the agenda, just to say, we're not going to go forward with a new RFP, RFQ, but I'd like to, I'd like to go back into the file and review with Vin Marino and then have the conversation and dialogue. I think we've got probably an opportunity to negotiate with Silver Petricelli moving into the final phase. I think that's what I need to bring back to the council for the next meeting.
Well, then, hold on, why do we want to approve this now if you're gonna go back and negotiate?
Well, that's what I'm saying, not to.
We didn't realize that was gonna happen, but I'll withdraw my motion.
I believe the existing contract covers this. I'm looking at the existing contract now, and when you look at the scope of the architect's basic services, I believe it gets you through the design phase.
Right.
Which is what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think, I think what we want to do is be clear about, rather than making a motion tonight, to be clear about what that phase will cost with respect to that. Obviously, it, I don't have that in front of me at this point.
Basically, Mike, what you're saying is we really ought to table this and so you can take a look at it, talk to Silver Petricelli?
Yeah, my goal was just to, just to clear that we're all on the same page, that we, it does not make sense to move forward as originally, you know, the council wanted to move forward with a new RFQ, RFP, I don't think it makes sense, and then, yes, to hold off and bring back for the, for the next meeting.
Just to be clear, based on my review of the contract, I think you are, until you get to the construction document space services, I think you have your contract with your architect through the design phase, and then when it comes to you for approval to advance it towards construction, you can continue under this contract, but in order to advance the con-
Then you went mute there at the end, could you repeat? After, you're like you're laughing or so. You're on mute.
We need the last sentence, Vin.
We can't hear you.
Vin, you there?
I think it, I think it's his internet connection.
Bad signal.
Yeah, he's not on mute, but we can't hear him.
I love this Zoom.
We still can't hear you, we can't hear you, Vin.
I'm being checked.
You keep breaking up, Vin.
Oh.
That's better.
All right, why don't we, I'll bring this, we'll talk about this in two weeks.
Good idea.
Okay.
Let's put it off.
Any call in?
If you can hear me, I believe you're fine until you get to construction document phase, so I think you're covered and you can continue under the existing contract without taking any action.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. So no motion, we're all set with that, let's move on.
No, excuse me, I think that we need to either have Counselor Duty and Counselor Forn withdraw their motions or go on it. Counselor Duty withdrew his motion.
Now withdraw the second.
Are we good, Michelle?
Yes, she said yes.
We're good, thank you.
Okay, okay, next, we'll move into C, Award of RFQ/P number nine, 2019-2020 Construction Management Owner Representative for Masonry Repair at North Branford Auditorium. It's an intermediate school, I guess.
Yeah, so you have a packet and a memo from Michelle Knackwood, and it basically goes through the, we received 12 bids for the, for the services, and look, you'll see that three came in at the same rate of $95 an hour, and then one, a fourth one just over that at $98. So the committee took a look, and obviously, the low bidder there of the three, Al Rose Construction is a familiar company and well-qualified, I don't think it was any struggle for them in, and not that there's anything wrong with the other companies are deficient in their bids, but with respect to their, you know, knowledge or understanding of the project or town or an experience, I think the edge, and I think the committee felt the edge goes to Al Rose Construction, and so that's the recommendation for this, for the services.
I just have a question, Mike, because this RFQP says that it's for North Branford Auditorium, but doesn't this also include the middle school? Because at 200 hours, I can't imagine they have 200 hours for the auditorium.
No, up to 200 hours on that, and we were also, I think, believe, I'll have to go back and pull it, but I think we were, we had the discussion and the objective to try and write this so that we have success with a bidder for construction services that we could also extend next year for the rest of the project. This is a small portion of the, of the project, obviously, since now we know what the, what the bid is on the low bid for the actual work, repair work, we were looking and up to, thinking that it might be up to 200 hours of work, but not necessarily.
Okay, so that, so the $19,000 is the flat rate, whether they work 10 hours or 200 hours?
Well, it's 95, we're looking at $95 an hour in terms of the project.
Oh, okay, so it's $95 an hour up to 200 hours?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and it's only for the auditorium?
Correct.
And it's not to exceed the $19,000 then?
Correct.
Okay, so we would have to go out to bid for them, for NBIS next year then? Because this is only covering-
Yes, we're gonna, right, we're gonna spend the time to really look at that additional, those additional flashing and roofing issues that we need to look at because of the water infiltration there, weren't captured the first time around. Wasn't until Fran had gone out there and, and, you know, given me a heads up that there, you know, other problems going on, so we're gonna, you know, begin this summer to put together a really, a really good spec on getting that out for, for winter.
But the, for the construction manager piece of it, that will also have to go back out to bid for NBIS? Or is this, or is this covering it?
Yeah, I think it covers, I think that was the goal, I just don't have it in front of me, I didn't bring the, I'll have to review, and I want to review to make sure that language is in there.
Okay. So I'd like to make a motion to award RFQ/P number nine, 2019-20, Construction Manager Owner Representative for Masonry Repairs at North Branford Auditorium to Al Rose Construction LLC of North Branford at an amount not to exceed $19,000, $95 an hour for 200, up to 200 hours.
Second by Tom.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampiano, any further discussion? No, we have a vote, Michelle?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Michelle, you might want to make a note that Mike Duty is, did not vote because he is not at his station right now.
Okay, thank you.
Sorry, I'm right here.
Oh.
My computer got me.
Michael? We just took the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
There we go. Okay, thank you. Next is bond analysis and review of building projects.
Yeah, this is a follow-up to Mark Chapman's presentation last week, or last meeting, I should say, that was last week. The spreadsheet was out there, I wanted to bounce it by Mark before I shared it, it was at the last meeting. The two sections are, the yellow is the existing general fund debt, so to the left, yellow, you see the existing principal and interest payments going out to 2030/31, and the yellow section, two-thirds of the way to the right, is what it costs a resident with a $300,000 fair market value house. So in this coming up year of 2021, it's costing that resident $626.08 for the debt service that the town has. The gray sections are the three projects that Mark talked about last week and ran the calculations, being the high school, the police station, and the communications project, and then that principal and interest combined is what the debt service will be going out to 2044/45. And then that, that principal and interest combined is what the debt service will be going out to 2044 slash 45. To the far right, gray numbers show the number that I, everybody I think is concerned about. What, what's the delta? What, what's it gonna cost additionally, uh, for a person with a $300,000 house? And over the 23 years, it averages about $516.60 per year, uh, using these, these numbers. So you see it ranges, you know, it's about 600 in some months, 500 in some months. But again, over the 23 years of the debt service, if we factor in all three projects, it's about $516.60 on average per year, uh, for a person with a $300,000 fair market value house.
So Anthony, if I'm reading this correctly, the yellow box is our existing debt-
Correct.
For the mill, when you have the mill rate. And then the gray box is our existing debt plus the three projects. So to get the increase, you would just have to subtract the two mill rates, but the additional increase.
Correct.
Okay.
Anthony, it's Ron. Um, I know these are just estimates, but the $300,000, is that assessed or is that?
Fair market value.
Okay.
And that number is actually, that's a number that Walt had asked me to use last meeting. It actually is pretty close. The CERC, uh, report for our town shows the median value of a house of roughly 282,000. So fair market value. So it's, it's, it's a reasonable number, um, to have as, as our ballpark parameter. Again, obviously, a person with a, a higher priced home, uh, it's gonna pay a little more. A person with a, a lower priced home may pay a little less. That's, that's the average for the $300,000 fair market value house.
So Anthony, the very last column is the increase, right?
Correct. That's the increased cost. You notice in the first three years, there's a zero increase because the debt service doesn't kick in until 22, 23. And that's when, again, it's minimal. It's $48 is the increase, then 157, then 272, and then to that $600 level, which it stays pretty constant at for 10 plus or, plus or so years. And again, the average over the 23-year lifespan of the debt is about $516.60. Per person with a $300,000 house. I also, I think the next page is, is an important one, too. That was a sheet that we had shared last week and I kinda scaled back the growth. Uh, I did, the first one was a two percent, the calculation I did on last meeting was a 2.52% year-over-year growth. And I scaled it back. The first one is a 2% year-over-year growth in the budget. And still at that point, the highest that the debt service comes to in, in 2028 is about 9.52% of our estimated budget. Again, nowhere near the numbers. The top part of the page, if you recall, is the actual numbers going back to 2005. And you see at some points, it was, it was 11, almost 11 and a half percent of, of our, uh, operating budget. I then went one step further and said, let's go back even more conservative and say we have 1% year-over-year growth in the budget. That's the next page. And at that point, the highest one, 2028, is, uh, 10.2%. Again, still significantly less than what it was in the peak when we did the NBIS, the two libraries and the Auger property bond.
Thanks, thanks, Anthony.
No problem.
Thank you. Any more discussion? Okay. Let's move, uh, let's move the, to E. Discussion additional members or alternates to the ad hoc, uh, design review committee. I had, uh, I had called around, I talked to the members of, of the council about this and everybody was, uh, okay with it. Not sure if we need a, a full-time member or an alternate. Uh, I, I know the, I know the Board of Ed, uh, did a, did a full-time member and an alternate. So, uh, it, it's up for discussion. Uh, I'd like to hear what you guys have to say. Maybe we come up with something.
Um, I think we should add another person. Uh, as a regular men, member, it would not in, I mean, you're just talking one additional person. And I think it would be good to have two town council members on, um, on the committee.
Okay, now, it's up to you guys. Would, uh, I talked to everybody about this and so one of, one of, one of the council members that was very interested was Marie Diamond. So-
I, I'd like to, I would like to first make a motion to increase the ad hoc committee, to add another town council member and to add an alternate from the Board of Ed, since they already appointed one. So let's just make it official that we add a town council member and an alternate from the Board of Ed.
Second. Tom seconded.
Okay, thank you. Uh, motion was made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by, uh, Deputy Mayor Zampano. Any, any further discussion?
Yes, if we do the police department, we have to have a representative from the police department on there. If we do, if we do the library, we have to have a representative from the library on there. There has to be a representative for each, you know, department or commission or whatever, um, that we're gonna put on there. To have fair representation, so.
Right, that, you're right.
At that point, at that point, once we're finished with Board of Ed projects, that Board of Ed number drops off.
Right, that's, you're right, Mike. That should be the variable.
Yeah, okay. Alright, I need somebody, uh, to take the position.
Yeah, well, no, first, so the motion is, so I'm gonna amend my motion-
Okay, alright.
To add a town council member, an alternate for the Board of Education, and to have a representative from the department where the construction is taking place, the building project. So, you know, like, like Mike said, if it's police, it's them. And so that, that's a changing position.
Okay, this high school would be Board of Ed. Okay.
Right, any school project is the Board of Ed.
Right, and I'll second it. Tom seconded.
Okay, uh, Michelle, did I give you that already? Motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Uh, any further discussion?
Yep, we are good.
Okay.
Is that a member of the police department or a member of the police commission or either one?
I would say should be a, well, what do we have on the Board of Ed? We have Bill Chody on there. That's a member. He's a employee, so we can make an employee and a commissioner.
How about you leave it up to them and just say to be appointed by the police commission?
That would be what I would think.
Yeah.
Good point, Ron.
Okay, we can, uh, do that when we get there. Can we, uh, Michelle, can we have a vote on this?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
So now I'd like to make a motion to appoint Marie Diamond, um, to the ad hoc committee in regards to the, um, NBHS project.
I'll second it.
Our low.
Whatever.
She's gonna be a full-time member.
Yes, yes.
Oh, okay, then I just appoint her to the ad hoc committee.
Right.
Okay, motion was made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Counselor Patonaster. Uh, any further discussion? Marie, you are interested, right?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, okay. Alright, just checking. Uh, okay, uh, no more discussion. Any further discussion? Can I have a vote, Michelle?
I just want to clarify that this is Counselor Angeloni moved, seconded by Counselor Patonaster to appoint Counselor Marie Diamond to the ad hoc design review committee for the police department?
No, it's just, she's just a regular-
Regular informant.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Just ad hoc committee.
Ad hoc committee, period, the end. Okay.
Period.
With all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain.
I abstain, Michelle.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, alright, uh, next we have discussion and, and review of fire department leases. I don't think, uh, I don't think we're ready for that yet. I talked to, uh, the town manager this afternoon. Uh, Mike, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, no, that's correct. Unfortunately, I was optimistic, thought we'd have the final numbers in the, uh, for the rental. But we had some issue with the, with the insurance, um, in getting those, but I'm, I'm confident we, we can get it ready and nail down for, uh, the next meeting on the 16th.
Okay, this is really dragging out a long time, so I really wanna see this done on our agenda to go forward on the next one.
Yeah, we, we, we had a really good productive meeting last week. Uh, Ben was able to join us and, and, uh, we hammered out the language. It's just the, and it's not on our end. It's, they're, they're waiting, they couldn't get the numbers from their, uh, prospective agents, so.
Okay.
I, I wanna underscore it, not on our end.
Okay.
Yeah. Just, yeah, just, we'll, we'll get it for the 16th.
Okay.
Okay, can I get that tabled? Or you just wanna?
I make, I make a motion to table this and have it on our next agenda, on the June 16th agenda.
Second, by Tom.
Okay, motion made by Counselor Angeloni, seconded by Deputy Mayor Zampano. Uh, any further discussion? Can we have a vote, Michelle?
I can't mute. There we go. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain?
Alright, next, uh, next we have G, uh, the police station, Walter. That Walter brought up. Walter, you wanna, uh, talk on this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a couple meetings ago, I talked to the police chief about the square footage on the proposed police station. I asked if we could build a stage, the station smaller than 14,000 square, square feet. The chief from the commission said they did their best and they could, could not fit everything they needed into anything under 14,000 square feet. So I did a little research, looked up towns and populations in the area. And I found, uh, basically five towns whose population is within 2,000 of ours. And found out the size of their police station. Our, our police station is roughly right now around 6,000 square feet. Um, Clinton's, uh, square footage is 20,000 square feet. Orange's square footage is 18,000 square feet. Derby's, uh, square footage is 15,000 square feet. Stores is 11,000. And Windsor Locks is 21,000. Like I said, those are all places that, uh, have populations really close to ours, within a couple thousand. And as you could see, the, uh, the square footage is close to 14,000 or more. So that kinda satisfies me as far as, uh, square footage. I just wanted to address that. And with saying that, I'd like to make a motion to allocate $7.5 million for a new one-story, 14,000-square-foot police station across from the Potato Fest location.
I second that for Tom.
Okay, so I, I thought the whole idea is we were going to architectural design and MM and E so that we could get a better cost estimate on the police station before we did anything.
Correct. You're gonna get a better cost. I mean, whatever the bid comes out, when you put the documents out, that's it. You gotta have, you gotta have a bottom line. We're not gonna spend any more than, than the bid documents come in at.
Right.
Walter, could you explain your position as to why that particular location?
Well, that's kinda what they had talked about. It doesn't have to be that location if that's not.
Well, isn't it, that's the Mooney property. Isn't that the one that we were looking at all along?
They had talked about.
Yes.
Oh, I thought you said the, I, I misunderstood you then. I'm sorry.
No, no.
No, he said, he, he said across from the Popo Fest.
Oh, he said, I didn't hear the part across.
This is, this is what they've been asking for and the, the square footage. And they all seem pretty committed to me. I think they'll do a good job, so.
No, I, I, I heard you say across. I thought you said Popo Fest property.
I, I'm still at a loss as to why we don't wanna get the architectural drawings and get a bid.
Right.
We're putting it out there saying, hey, we got seven and a half million bucks to spend, now bid on it? You really think a bid's gonna come in much less than seven and a half million bucks if we do that? No.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I don't-
Uh, I mean, there's, you know, we're gonna get, we're gonna get a figure no matter what we do, but Joe, you do have a point, you know? So, I, I see no problem, you know, once the architectural drawings go out to bid, you know, we go for it.
Well, if you remember correctly, the last presentation, if, if I remember correctly, was about 16,000 square feet was what was presented to us.
No, it was 14,000.
Uh, on February 18th.
Marie, Marie, well-
The, the, the recommendation from the committee was 14,000.
No, I know, I, I realize that, but when they presented the, um, when, uh, what's his name, Bill?
Yeah, but that wasn't, that wasn't our last.
That, but he, he-
That didn't come out of our last meeting.
Right, our, my level 14.
What, what's that?
The committee went with a 14, not the architect.
Yeah, the conceptual drawings show 14,000.
Right.
Okay.
I have to agree with Joe. I, I think we're bidding against ourselves and opposed to it on that basis. Not that I'm opposed to the police station. So everybody understand that, but I just don't think you put your number out there and say, okay, now come in and give me a price. Cause that's gonna be the price.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I don't know why we're rushing quickly when we're moving along and trying to get a better handle on it. Before we set a price.
Right, I agree.
Well, I mean, I mean, are, are we putting a number out there, though? That's the question.
Yeah.
Their public record, Tom.
He said 7.5-
7.5 million. That's what they asked for, 7.5 million for 14,000 square foot building. That's what they, that's, that's what they laid out to us. I'm just-
Well, that, well, that's one of the reasons why we, we tried to move ahead with the architectural drawings at the last meeting to get a firm price, um, on a, on a bid. Once the architectural drawings go out, they go out and then people bid on them and then we'll bid up and we see what the price is gonna be.
Mayor, can I speak for a minute? Mayor, can I speak for a minute?
Yeah, sure. Who's this?
It's Victor.
It's, it's Victor.
Yeah, sure, yeah, go ahead, Vic.
If you put the bond on, like, uh, Councilman Goode said, at seven and a half million, it's not gonna change people from bidding on it properly. Right now, there's not that much work out there. Numbers are down. Just because you got a, a, a bond amount of seven and a half million, just like if you do a school of 50 million, doesn't mean you're gonna get 50 million. You're gonna get what the documents entitled to and what people bid on it. But it, it gives the contractor more initiative to push forward, knowing the bond's already in place because it's a more aggressive bidding process. So it's got a double-edged sword on it. If you look at it, that it's got a number on it, seven and a half, and you think that's what everybody's gonna go by, it's not. It's gonna go by fair market value and what that job's worth. Cause construction right now and work out there is real slow and you could ask anybody. So this project with a cap on it at seven and a half million, the way it is now, you, you, this town should be in good shape, getting good numbers. But it, it attracts bigger and better contractors, knowing the bond's already in place. Just so you guys know from a contracts point. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, it's, uh, Walter, can I speak again?
Yeah, go ahead, Walter.
Um, I had toured the police station back right when I had be, had become a member and I had said this before. I was literally upset after seeing what was in there. And I'm just, I'm just trying to get the ball rolling as fast as I can here because I know other council members have spoke up with passion about it, too. And I think just by, I, I think we gotta do something right away. I mean, I, I know we're getting prices and stuff, but I think we have to say, like, hey, we're putting this much money aside. If this is what's needed to build that 14,000 square foot, it's, it's just been going on for years. I mean, I'm new to this, but it's been going on for years. And there's no doubt in my mind, cause when I went to look at the police station, I was like, there's no way they needed to know when they could renovate. I was in there for five minutes. It's gotta be done. There's no doubt about it. So I think by just saying, let, let's make the commitment now. I mean, I'm just-
But the project is moving forward because we've, we've agreed to go to architectural drawings and M M and E, so we are moving it forward on there.
So we have, we have agreed to do it? We have agreed that we are doing it?
Yeah, we, we're moving it along. We've agreed to go to architectural drawings and M M and E's to get a better understanding of what this is. So it's, it's not that it's sitting idle. And, and we just voted on that, so I don't know why we're throwing that out the window and all of a sudden going to approving bonding for it without doing that stuff.
With all due respect to everyone's opinion, and, and I do hear you and I respect your opinions, I don't think there's any one of us that would walk into a car dealership, and the guy said, so what do you want? And say, we want a forty-two thousand eight hundred dollar car. We would say, we want a car. What's it gonna cost me?
Right. Well, they had told us.
But this, it's not the same, it's, it's not quite the same thing here, because you're gonna have, you're gonna have competitive bids. You're, you're not walking in, that's quite a bit different, Joe. I understand where you're coming from, but that's, that's a bit different.
I can see that's different, Tom, but I just don't bid against myself. It's just my nature, and I think it's, it's a bad step. So if we're gonna do this, I'd like a roll call vote on this motion, if that's possible to ask for, and
Yeah.
Vote your conscience.
I'd just like to add something, if I could, please, Mr. Mayor. Where are we as far as the architectural drawings? Did the bid go out?
There, there, well, there is no bid. That's, that was our earlier discussion, that it's staying with Silver Petrazzulli, the current. There's language in the contract that we can move ahead with them.
Alright, so, and do we have any anticipation as how long that will take?
Uh, two, I think it's two to three months, Ron.
Because I understand, I understand both sides. I understand not wanting to put the number out there. I understand wanting to move the project along. But I'm also feeling like we're, you know, jumping ahead. I just, so two to three months. So are you guys saying, so am I understanding everybody that we, we want to wait two to three months before we allocate the money? When the, when the bids come in?
Well, there is no bid right now.
When they come in? No, I, well, when the numbers come in from the architect.
Yeah, what, once the, uh, once it goes from the architect, once he finishes the drawings, drawings have to go out to bid. And then people have to, builders have to bid on the drawings. And then the question goes to Anthony, how long does it take for a bond to get approved?
Well, so it take, it's gonna take two to three months for the architect to finish their drawings, or two to three months for us to get bids back?
Two, two to three months before the architect finishes their drawing and puts it out to bid, and we get the bid back. Hopefully, it should be within three months.
You raised it.
Is that, is that, Marie, is that how the timeframe went on that?
That's the way it was in the, from the committee. But we had said in the committee that we weren't gonna go more than seven point five million.
Right.
So I think that's what Walter's saying.
That's what I'm saying, I'm just, I mean, we haven't committed to the police station, and I'm asking for a commitment. We haven't committed, we know it's been being talked about for months and even years. I'm asking for the commitment. Kind of like if you're saving, if you're saving money up for something to buy something, you got the chunk of money, it's there, we're committed, we're gonna spend it on a new car, whatever it is.
Can I just suggest something to the council? Uh, maybe, along with counseling, Fawnin's kind of concern, uh, this is a public meeting, and everything you say is part of the public record. So to the extent you're saying, I have X that we're willing to spend up to, whether or not now you put that in the bid, that's out in the public. So maybe you should refrain some, from saying what you're willing to spend if you don't want to include it in the bid, because if your bids come in at six million or eight million, you're gonna have to make a decision as to whether or not you're willing to spend that amount of money. So to say today that you're gonna spend seven point two, that's now part of the public record, and if I'm a bidder, I'm gonna go back and I'm gonna look at your minutes to see if there's ever been any discussion as to this subject. So you may want to refrain from saying what you're willing to spend.
Thank you.
Anthony, what will it take? How long for a bond?
Well, the, the process would be, this would be picked up in the capital improvements program, that is typically done over the summer and September, so if it's anticipating all these numbers come back in time and you have firm numbers for that, you're, you're gonna vote on the C I P as, as one lump sum with various projects in it. This would be an additional project. You wouldn't put individual motions for every project in the C I P. So let's assume it gets approved by September. We could have Robinson and Cole start working on bond resolutions and maintain our usual schedule of getting bonding in November. We'd have cash in hand by November.
Okay.
But it should be captured as part of, part of the whole C I P.
Can I speak, Mayor?
I'm sorry, who's that?
It's Victor, how you doing? Okay. If they go to break ground, and I'm listening to everybody, and I agree, there's some good points and bad points, but who's gonna break ground on a monolithic pour, one, one floor slab in the, in the, going into the winter? Who's gonna start construction on that? You know, this is a commercial building. It's not a house where you could cover the slab. Ninety percent of the work is all site work and concrete work, so I do agree with some of the stuff Joe Fawnin said and Vinnie Marino, but it's just a cap number for bidding. And just so everybody knows, the commission and the building committee already approved seven point five million dollars to go forward to the town council. It is on record. I'm looking at it on my other computer. There's already a number out there with a firm number. But this pretty much, if this vote goes whichever way it goes, it kind of just gets everything moving. We're waiting three months. I did talk to the town manager, or Michelle Knackwood, two weeks ago in reference to the contract already being awarded to the architects. It was already signed by the town manager, and yet we're two weeks later, no information has been given to you, and we're gonna wait two more weeks just to review his paperwork so we can get him drawing. It's just like everybody's dragging their feet. So I'm just saying, you're gonna wait till November to build a commercial building? You're gonna have serious site improvement problems, and you're gonna have weather conditions that are gonna be on that bid that are gonna hurt this, the town financially, so be careful.
It's never gonna be ready to go into, by the time we get drawings and everything else done, we're still gonna be at the same point that
That's, that's, that's not true.
They'll start site work, but they probably wouldn't pour the foundation or anything this year. I think the project is moving along, because we've, we sent it to architectural design.
I'm not, I'm not arguing it, given the information that we have as a committee. I'm not gonna argue any points. Um, but if the drawings and the bids come back in September and the bond is ready, they will dig in September, and you will have your foundation by the end of October. It's not that hard, but if you try to put it in in November, you're gonna be right in the middle of December with a foundation going in, you're gonna have site problems with weather conditions. It's all part of the contingency package inside a contractor's bid when you get to this part of a job. And I know a lot of the council members and a lot of people on the committee don't understand that aspect of it, but weather conditions are huge in a commercial project. So you gotta watch the wet, you gotta watch what time of the year you're starting things.
Okay, thank, thank you, Vic. We, we understand. Alright, any further discussion? And Michelle, uh, if we're gonna do a vote here, we're gonna do, I'd like a roll call vote, please, like Joe asked for.
Yes, thank you. Mayor Viglione?
No.
Deputy Mayor Zampano?
Yes.
Council Angeloni?
No.
Council Diamond?
Yes.
Council Duty?
Yes.
Council Fawnin?
No.
Council Gold?
Yes.
Council Paternoster?
Yes.
Council Policia?
Yes.
And can I just ask, Deputy Mayor Zampano, seconded that motion, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, what was the vote, Michelle?
It's six, three.
Six, three in favor.
Correct, six, three in favor.
Okay, uh, next I have, I have seven aye, but I don't remember what that was.
It's seven h.
H, okay.
Yes, it's, it's in regards to the Poco Fest. Um, so the, the Poco Fest committee met on Monday night. Um, and with our action at our last council meeting in regards to cancelling for this year. Um, so they have, they have more time to think about for next year, um, and things that they're gonna improve, and they were, I know Jen, the Poco Coordinator, and Carrie and Fran walked the property with Fran Marola. Um, not sure if Pat was in on that, the interim director. But anyway, they're starting to think about site improvements and things. Um, they want to put a list together of things that they would like to look at and to start to get some cost um, to improve the sites and possibly using some of the buildings that are on the Auger property. Um, so, but before they did that, um, they asked that I just bring it before the council to see if there's any concern from council members of them moving forward, knowing that they cannot do any of this work unless they have, because it's town property until they have our blessing. But they just wanted to know if we're okay with them starting to look at options and to get pricing to come back to the council. Um, one of the things that they're looking at is to pour a concrete slab where the cooker is in the back, um, where they do the, where they cook the potatoes and corn to make it a more stable um, spot, so that's like one of the areas, and then just other site improvements. So is there any objection from any council members or any questions as far as them moving forward?
Do they have an approximate cost?
They have no, no, because they have a, they have a whole list of different ideas, and I think when they start looking at some of them, it may become a, a project that they can't do, or they'll definitely have to do it in phases. It's not one year. I, I know, because they talked about leveling off certain areas um, of the grounds. And so that's, you know, like where Franny would have to come in and, you know, there's wetlands on there, so depending on what they want to do, what they're thinking, um, that will all come into play. And this is not just a one-year type of thing. It's, it's over time. Um, and they would prioritize their list as to what they wanted to get done first.
Over time, that makes sense.
Yeah, it, it's definitely not a one-year project. It's overtime, and it all depends on their funding, too. Um, so.
Hey, Rose, I, I thought they cooked the potatoes in a truck.
Well, they have a cooker. It's, it's not attached, I mean, it's a, a, a freestanding.
Yeah.
Um.
Kind of looks like trailer, Tom.
Yes.
No, I, I, yes, I remember when that working back there, and I, I could have, I, I thought it was a truck, you know, actual truck they were cooking them in.
No, no. So it's, it's, I mean, they've had it, you know, they clean it up and they wrap it, so it stays there. They don't move it. But they, right now, it's just like on a gravelled area, and I think they're looking to definitely get a concrete pad and maybe some type of a storage building to store some other things. And, uh, whether it's like a refrigerated area or a freezer area for their supplies and just general supplies, so some of their ideas of what they wanted to do.
Would have been the perfect year to level that place off, but.
It's also a lot of money to level off that. So if there's no, if there's no objections, I'm going to let them know that they can go ahead and start getting, putting their list together and pricing.
Yeah, I'm okay with it, Rose.
Okay.
Okay. I need, uh, well, I guess we're all set. Need a motion to adjourn?
No, there's one more item. It was, item I is finance committee. So I would like to set a date or set a meeting
Oh, that's right, okay.
For finance committee. Um, and whether it's Zoom or in person, I don't, depending on, um, I would like it sometime between now and the next council meeting. Um, one of the items is the, the P card, um, policy and procedure. And another item is, um, department pension.
I'm sorry, what was the second one, Rose?
The fire department pension.
Right, okay.
But the, the, in discussing the fire department pension, it's not inviting the, the reps. It's, it's our, you know, it's time for the finance committee to talk about and discuss what, um, we want to put together to present to the, for the fire department.
Okay, you need a date?
Um, Joe, what's, Joe and Tom, what's your availability?
I, I could work around almo- almost anything right now.
Me, too. So what are you thinking of, Rose? Pick a date?
Um, well, if it's, if it's via Zoom, um, what time are you guys available? Are you available early or later? You know, five, is five too early?
No, I, I could, I think I can do five. I mean, who's, is it, who's gonna be in the meeting?
Well, it's, you're on finance, Joe is, myself, it would be Mike Paulus and Anthony.
Right now, the big media for five o'clock meeting would be Tuesday, Thursday on Zoom.
Okay.
So nine or eleven would work for me.
Okay. Tom, are you, are you okay with next Tuesday?
Yeah, that's fine. Yep, that, next Tuesday would be perfect, actually, for me.
Okay. Okay, so Mike, do you want to set up for five o'clock next Tuesday, the ninth?
Five P M. on the ninth, yep.
Okay.
And that's by Zoom, we're agreed, or?
Uh, yeah, probably, because they're only partial opening town hall at the next, starting next week, so.
Okay. I love Zoom.
Okay, we're all set? I need a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, citizen statements this time, eh?
Oh, yeah. Well, I'm sorry, citizen statements and petitions, I'm sorry. Mike, you have anything?
Uh, yeah, just stand by. I'm checking for the special email. Uh, I do not see any. And, uh, I don't know if there's, if Anthony, if you're on, if there are any, uh, posts.
Uh, there's one comment from Julie Pike Shadman regarding this, the letters from the high school. They should read all the letters, not if they want to. That's the only comment.
Okay.
Thanks, Anthony.
Is it possible, I don't know if it's out of form for me to make a comment?
You're a citizen.
I am a citizen, among other things. But, um, I just wanted to make mention, I don't know if everyone is aware of the efforts that are going forward and have been put into having a special graduation for the seniors during this time. And a lot of thought and energy has been put into this, and I just wanted to thank everyone that's been involved for making something happen for our kids. So they are going to, they were broken up into two different, um, phases, and they're incrementally being, I think it's in six-minute increments where we are gonna be able to have our children receive their diplomas and pound or shake hands or whatever can be done, but, um, I just think that a lot of effort went into it, and I just thank everyone who brainstormed and came up with some way to pay tribute to our kids. So thank you.
That's highly commendable.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Michelle. Is there any way we could help out more?
I think if you built a new high school, that would be perfect. I think if you built a new high school, that would be perfect.
We'll try to have it ready for the ceremony, Michelle.
Okay, anything else? Alright, I need a motion to adjourn.
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you.
You got that, Michelle?
Aye.